We'll start, Matt. We're okay to go, Matt?
You bet.
Okay, if somebody's not here, we'll just...
Jade will not be here. I do know that Jade will not be here at the Superbakey. It's his honor right now.
Okay, so I'm gonna just...
Communication items?
Communication items, yeah.
So, Mary Homberg is in a meeting right now, and if... or when that meeting gets done, she will come over and join us. And then, Donnie will not be here tonight. He has some family items that he has to take care of, so he won't be here. So, let's start with Baby Mr. Orland.
All right, on the list.
Oh, good evening.
You're on.
Okay. And Max is home with family illness, so he won't be here tonight either. With that, we did start track and softball yesterday. And baseball, the pitchers and catchers started yesterday, and then their season starts the next week along with golf. Just a few highlights. We have started registration. We met with all of the students a few weeks ago. And yesterday, we did a test run with about 20 seniors or senior-to-be, seniors-to-be, and had them go through the process on campus, which eliminates a step that we had to do manually last year. So, we... that went really well, and we were able to kind of catch a few bugs. And we'll continue... I think we're gonna continue to do it in small groups so that we can work with individual students as they come in, so. Sixth grade is leaving on their winter camp tomorrow. They go up to the Long Lake Conservation Center. And so, they'll be leaving tomorrow morning about 8:30, and they'll be back on Friday. And we just continue to work on getting bids for some of the projects that we wanna work on this summer. And in a little bit, I'll talk a little bit about next year with daily schedule and some things that we are planning on putting in place for that. So, any questions for me?
Matt?
Okay, good evening. Just passing out the spring brochure. That's new, our new brochure since the last time I presented in front of the board. Many new activities. We had one day in between that brochure being done and when we start summer. So, summer brochure planning is going full force. That one's a quicker turnaround. That'll be out the third week in April, we go to press. So, 15th Annual Talent Showcase will be held on April 5th, so get your tickets now. Many new, good acts there. Pause Report, and we're now up to 111 in pause. Preschool Report for next year. Three-year-old Monday, Wednesday, we're at six. We only have eight spots available. Three-year-old Tuesday, Thursday, we're at seven. There's eight spots available. Our Friday has three. That's a Friday-only with eight spots available. Four-year-old filled up at... it was before 6:00 AM on the morning, the opening day of preschool. So, I think by 12:04, I think I might've had three or four people, so. And then, the four-year-old PM has 27 with 36 spots available. Fitness Center Report, membership remains strong. We can't wait for the new facility, so we're already planning activities for that. Bulldog Livestream, we ended the winter livestream program strong. We did a special hockey section game, so we were able to do a hockey game up there, which was fun. Our spring season starts this Thursday for livestream with the band concert. And then, our first two spring sports broadcasts are scheduled for April 16th and 17th. And we added three new sponsors for the spring season. So, any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
All right. Then we'll move on to School Resource Officer update. If you guys wanna just have a... I don't know if the three of you want or whatever, but you could certainly, you guys could have a seat over there and... You do not need to raise your right hand. Well, hold on. So, my hope was just to have Chief Wagner come and visit a little bit about the SRO program. I believe this is different than it has been in past years. And so, just give the Board干部 an update to where things are at, and then maybe we can talk a little bit about where things may go in the future.
So, kind of give you an idea. When we started this last year, the contract that we worked out, we committed four, at least 480 hours to the district. And in doing so, we hired Officer Feigman and Officer Lepacca here to be able to cover those hours in the school. To date, we put in 373 hours so far. We've got, I believe, additional 42 days between now and the end of the year, so we will most definitely hit what our commitment is to you guys. I know these guys have worked on quite a number of different things. Tony was involved in the elementary school here recently with, I think it's the I Love to Read Month, is that right? Along with Tom and Jerry the K-9. I think Dare went well, as far as I know, this year. And I'm gonna let these guys talk about kind of some of the things that they've been involved in and what they're seeing. And so far, all the feedback I'm getting from both these guys in the district is things are going really well with the program, and people are happy with it, so. Joel, you guys wanna talk?
My name is Tony Lepacca. I don't... Mr. Bullard, I know. I recognize him. The rest of you, I don't, which I guess is okay. This is my second year of teaching Dare. I came in last winter and taught Dare to the fifth graders. And now, this year again, and this is my 13th year of Dare. I came from Wilmer and taught Dare for a number of years. It went very, very well. You have bright, smart kids who listen, do a good job. So, other than Dare at the elementary, I... when I'm working, I try and spend about a half hour to an hour a day there. To be honest with you, you're pretty well behaved. You don't have, you don't have the issues that I am used to dealing with, so the kids are good. But they're great, actually. Mrs. Likebow's class, I've known her since she was in elementary school also. And speaking to her in the hallway one day, we were talking about things, and I mentioned that my wife and I play cribbage on the days I'm not working. So, she asked if I would come in and teach the class to play cribbage. So, we did that one day, got 'em started on that. And then, as Chief Wagner mentioned, I did a little reading on Love to Read with Tom and Jerry also. So, other than that, I've spent a fair amount of time at the high school, mostly patrolling, observing cameras, helping out where I can, generally in the lunchroom during lunches and hallways during passing times. Do you have any questions for me? Is there anything you'd like to ask me?
Well, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Jerome Feigman. I retired from the State Patrol in 2015. I've been subbing here in the district basically since 2015. Seems to be a little more every year. Today, now, I subbed all day. I am in the fitness center tonight. I've been doing that since I retired also. Tomorrow, I'm here in the morning as the SRO. In the afternoon, I sub for an hour, and then I'm back in the fitness center tomorrow night. So, I tend to wear a lot of hats in the same day sometimes. What's really worked well for me is a lot of the kids know me. I was a familiar face, you know, when I started walking around with a uniform on. They didn't have any approach issues with me. In fact, they were rather straightforward when they had something to say. And I found that that's worked really well as far as communication goes. I have a little poor group of kids that I would've said three or four years ago would be trouble from the word "go." And they're probably some of the best kids that I've got, that I talk to. They're fitness fanatics now. They come in and overtake the gym every day, just about, for an hour or so, and lift. And now, they're bringing other younger kids in with them also. I have anything from sixth graders all the way to seniors that come in after school. And I think that crossover that I have really makes a good connection. Because they don't just view me as one, as a uniform or as a cop. They view me in all different lights. So, when I walk around in the uniform during the day, I don't think half the time they even really notice the uniform. They just know who I am. And I think that makes the communication between all the levels much easier. I don't have any great programs like Tony to be a star for. I basically just show up and walk around a lot. But I do work with the social worker here, you know, on occasion. If she has certain students that she's concerned about. I've worked with Mr. Orland a few times on some things. As Tony said, we're always available to help out, you know, no matter what it is. So, I... I've gotten a lot of good feedback, both from kids, teachers, city council members, everybody that seems to think that it's going really well. And I think all three of us would agree that for our first year of kind of just diving into this, it's, it has gone really well. I don't know what you think about it, but... Do you have any questions for me directly, or...
All right, just for the three of you.
Okay.
If you were to describe in 10 words or less, what is the purpose of the program?
From my perspective, it's bridging that gap between the law enforcement and our students. There's a safety component, obviously, having the officers in the school. Sorry, it's more than that. You know me, Rick, so I talk a lot. It's, you know, it's about bridging that gap between the law enforcement and us, building that rapport so that when they have those issues, they're able to come in, you know, talk to us, whether it's talking to Tony, talking to Jerome, those guys being kind of that, you know, that connection for us as the road officers so that we can address these issues before they become issues. And then, there's the safety side, just to make sure that the buildings themselves are safe and secure and that if, heaven forbid, but if something were to happen, we do have that immediate response here when the guys aren't here.
I think it's great. The issue that we, that I always felt we needed, we just needed the contact of the students and people like yourselves so that whether it's something here in the school or in their lives, that they know there's somebody there that they can talk to. And sometimes, that relationship does never get created. So, we have here in the school, we have all this, but just you walking around, just communicating with the kids, just you wearing the uniforms is something that the kids will have forever.
I agree with you 100%. Pardon me for butting in, but I came from Wilmer. I worked there for 29 years, the last, I think, the last 11 or 12 in the schools. And when you're a cop on the street, I worked patrol for 17 years. I'd stop for coffee or supper or something. And parents do it without thinking, but they tell their two-year-old, "Behave, or the cop's gonna arrest you." You know, so, and we all do that as a joke. But what that does is that puts the thought into somebody's mind that they aren't approachable. And we're, as it says, a school resource officer. We're a resource for the staff and the students both and the citizens. But we want, I want those kids to look at me as somebody who does a job. Like any other adult, I want to be respected, but I wanna earn that, and I want the students to feel they can approach me. You know, I have to tell a funny story. It was the day after Halloween, and one of the students in the morning, as I'm walking through the cafeteria, one of the high schoolers said, "Hey, Halloween was yesterday. What's, you know, why are you wearing your, you know, what do you got your costume on for?" And I said, "Well, it's my uniform. What's your excuse?" And the buddies who were sitting with him got a big charge out of it. So, I enjoy that when they feel comfortable enough to rib me a little bit. It wasn't disrespectful, but it was, it was fun.
I think in the elementary school especially, that they see somebody in a uniform other than just out on the road someplace. And the other thing I would mention is, and it's not you guys, but go to the basketball games, and one of the officers is caught off and steps in. And I've not only seen him standing at the doorway, but he'll come over and sit down with the kids for a few minutes or something like that. So, I just pass that on. I think that's a very positive thing as well.
I think part of that is the intercommunication between us. You know, they carry what they see and hear from us to other officers when they meet them or even if they have an interaction on the roadway or on the street. You know, I think their demeanor that they have with us will carry forward to make it just a better communication line between them and anybody else that wears a uniform.
Interacting with an officer in a low-stress situation is a whole lot different, and it changes the mind. The mindset is different.
And I think with social media, social media has really put a bad light on us. And it's hard to overcome that, but when you have youth that are just engulfed with social media, but they have a different, you know, their personal experience is positive with us, they'll maybe think for themselves and not, you know, not believe everything they hear.
And I believe the plan moving forward is, as we head towards the end of this year, you know, I'll be communicating with these guys and discussing kind of what the plan is and, you know, talking with Mr. Bullard kind of about what the plan is for next year and looking at maybe some more structured-type programming things, you know, to start building that program and, you know, make it even more successful than what it is right now, so.
And I would just reiterate, I mean, I think, Rick, when you say in 10 words or less, you know, what is the purpose of the program? The purpose is relationships. That is 100% what the purpose is. And from my experience and from what I'm hearing, both Tony and Jerome are doing exceptionally well at that. And so, that's exciting from the lens that I'm looking at this through. The other thing I think that's important is, this is truly kind of the first run at this. There's been a string of missteps that aren't anyone's fault or anything, but it has really just impeded any sort of progress about formal SRO programming and the such in pains with various schools. So, this is step one. Relationships are vital in order for things to move forward. And what's exciting now is now, come the end of this school year in spring and summer, we can really have a conversation about where can we go from here. Because I was explaining this to Paul last summer as we were visiting about this. The number-one thing of importance for the school district is consistency. And I know sometimes that's counterintuitive to necessarily law enforcement practices and predictability and all that. But for us to really have an effective SRO program here, we need consistency because we have students of all ages, that we have some that are really regimented in schedules that we have to follow, some have more flexibility. But until you can get that consistency, it's hard to really have something grow and develop into what we all want it to be. To me, that's the best thing about this year. It has been, consistency has been the rock. The, these two gentlemen have been here every day they're on the schedule, and that's, you know, to be commended. So, I'm really excited about it. I'm happy to be able to have the conversations about where we can go next with it, too.
Have we heard anything from the community or any other board members? I haven't heard anything. I... My concern would be that people would come across with a negative attitude. "Oh, we need to have police in the schools because there's problems," instead of being able to emphasize, "No, it's a positive thing." It's building those relationships. I just don't know how the community is...
That's a good, that's a good question. And that's the thing that, you know, maybe our student reps can talk a little bit about this as well. But just being in the building, and particularly this building, I don't get the feeling that when Jerome turns the corner in the hallway that that's the heavy is here now, everybody straightened up, and that's not the atmosphere. And so, I guess that, that classic perception of like what you're talking about, Tony, is be good or you're gonna be arrested type thing. I don't think that that's how students view what's going on here. And maybe you can say that better than I, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, most of the time, like, I mean, some days I get here, what, at like 11? And I know I've ran into Tony a few times, and he's like, "Oh, did you sleep in this morning?" You know, like, whatever. So, I mean, I think you don't even really notice that, like, they're in their uniform. Like Jerome said, you know, it's just kind of like, they're here. And I mean, I guess some people might see, like, teachers as like the same old big deal, but like I don't. And honestly, like, I don't even really realize, you know, oh, that's like our school resource officer. They're just another person, I think, in our school, so.
And when I went to high school, there was a police there. It was a bad deal. But I don't think I've passed a high school during school hours where I don't see a car out front. I mean, at first, I was always like, "Whoa, what's with that school?" But now, it's like every school, including ours, you can see a car out front, and it's, it's normal, right?
Yeah.
And I think, you know, when it comes to the community's perception, I think we've done a pretty decent job of, you know, letting people know when we can. You know, we don't do a lot of publicity and stuff like that on it, but, you know, the conversations I have with the public, when I do have them, you know, we really try and reiterate, we are not here in the traditional law enforcement capacity. We are here to build these relationships, you know. I, my goal is to never have to charge students with anything out of the school district. Our goal is, let's solve the problems before they hit that point. And these guys are the kind of that first line of defense in being able to address that. It's like, okay, we're seeing issues. Let's take care of it before we have to get to, you know, more serious consequences. So, you know, I think it's, you know, the community as a whole, I think, is they understand that, they know that. I think that helps to understand that it's a positive thing versus a negative.
Do you see the city council continuing? I mean, they're on board now into the future, they're not just...
Oh, absolutely. You know, I echo Mr. Bullard's, you know, kind of the frustration we've had up until this year. And as you guys know, for the Police Department, this hasn't exactly been the best year when it comes to staffing. You know, having an officer go down with an injury. Now, we've got, you know, we're gonna be short again. Having these two guys here, what it's done is it provided that stability. And I told Mr. Bullard after, you know, the summer, when we had the officer go down with an injury, it's like, I'm really glad they're here because everything we had worked to build, if they weren't here, would have been, it would've been impossible this year. So, having them here and having that, these guys and that consistency has been great, not only for the school, but for the Police Department, so. My hope is that we can continue to grow the program. I mean, it's, I think it's a great thing, and I think, you know, these guys are doing really good things here, so. Where it goes from there, you know, who knows, but...
With the emphasis on the school's safety and all of the new cameras we've put in and all of the talk about injuries and whatnot, things going in the schools, I think the public pretty much views you guys as an extra resource, and they're happy to have you here. It isn't the thought that, "Oh, no, we've got cops in the school." It's, "Wow, I'm glad we've got extra help."
Actually, I had somebody in my church ask me that one day. "How come I see a cop car at the high school so much?" I just had to tell her. I said, "Well, it's just because we're there." You know, we go there, two of us go there, and we're just there to add a little safety to the school, but also to topic kids, you know, and to give them a different viewpoint. And then she, it's like the lightbulb, "Oh, okay, I get it now," you know. I think a lot of people just make that assumption when they see a squad car out front, that something bad happens. It's not necessarily so. So, law enforcement has always been reactionary. You know, you only call the cops when things go bad. Well, I think it makes good sense to involve us with the staff and the students so it doesn't get to that point, you know. And I think that's what the SRO kind of enables a little bit.
I think as we move forward and weather things, you know, we... in February at our business meeting, we did take a look at budget, and there was some reference to some things that potentially we're looking at adding versus having to make reductions and the such. The thing, once those are kind of finalized and put in idea form, what you're gonna notice is there's a heavy emphasis on social-emotional learning. And that is something that, in my opinion, resource officers play a vital role in that social-emotional piece as well. And so, I think there's a direct connection there, and I think that'll give us some real direction as far as where the SRO program is gonna be going and what's next.
Well, nicest report that I've heard.
It's great. It's exactly what we were hoping for, or I was at least, and I think all of us, so.
Just to throw something out there, this may be way down the line, or maybe it's just a pie in the sky, but have you ever thought about having some kind of a class in criminology or something? We would have some people in the school that might be able to...
We've, both Jerome and I have gone to a Jenna Andrews class, and I call it Stump the Chum. So, what we have to do is come up with questions. Kids, all kids wanna know, I mean, even in Dare class, if I finish the lesson early, there's what we call a Dare box. It gives them a chance to ask any question, you know. So, both of those, and that's kind of how that goes. Kids in high school tend to ask questions about crimes, underage consumption, you know, hands-free law, those kind of things. And so, that gives them an opportunity to say, ask them for a friend. And the young kids, they, you know, they say, "Well, you know, what are you doing? You're not being a police officer." They do the same thing their parents do, you know. So, it's those kind of things. So, to, maybe that isn't exactly what you're looking for, but we're already doing some of that. And I think, I think it's good for the kids. It gives them a chance. I like doing that regularly. I don't know how Jerome does. He hasn't complained, but...
No, I like it. I do it in other classes. I mean, I...
Yeah, you have a career to teach, so.
Yeah, so that's, today I substitute for Mr. Nelson, and in his health class, we were talking about some things that related back to my old career, so. You know, that's, for me, it's a little different because it crosses over a lot, you know. I walked through the elementary school with getting certain kids for one-on-one gym time, and I have kids that go by and they go, "Are you cocked today?" "Nope, not cocked today." "Teacher, you're gay?" "Yep." So, you know, there's those little relationships already starting. Or they ask me, "Where my dog?"
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you for coming by and giving us an update.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
A question, if you already addressed this, like for parents, and one of you had mentioned a comment, because I've gotten this comment too, like at any sort of games at the school, "Why are, why are the police here all the time?" So, maybe that's just an opportunity. How do we inform parents, like what, why? Because I don't think all the parents potentially know why you are here and kind of what the outcomes and goals are. So, it might be an opportunity in newsletters or podcasts to just say more about it instead of them wondering like, "Okay, is it because there's more issues at school? Like, this is why we're going in."
So, a question, and this is really more for Matt, but, you know, you guys have the TV series. Is there a way that we can do something with that? Put these guys on the spot, and one of these two guys can sit down?
Well, I think we have a host of different ways we can solve it. Absolutely.
So, it's not a negative to them, that why are they here? It's something positive.
Well, and it displays a lot of ridiculous rumors, so.
Exactly.
So, you don't have some Facebook trial lawyer out there that's...
Exactly.
"I saw a cop car, and there's 12 answers. They all know what happened."
Exactly.
If you're going on TV, you need to learn a song and dance, though.
I'm old enough to know where I can just say no.
Well, from the Police Department side, I just wanna thank you guys for your guys' continued support and commitment to this. I know it's something that we've been struggling up until this year to really get formulated, so I appreciate you guys hanging with us and, you know, until we could get to this point and building this into, you know, what I think we all had originally envisioned it to be. So, you know, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, talking next, we have... Hi, Mary, how are you?
How are you?
Welcome. Do you have an elementary update? Can we, can we go back to that?
Sure.
Perfect.
It's gotta be turned the right way because otherwise, they can't see it. Okay. Hi, everybody. I apologize for being late. I was at a meeting. We finished our One School, One Book Initiative, which I'm sure many of you got the copies of the book, "Friendle." That was a fantastic opportunity for our kids and our families and our staff to have a shared language about a book. Really positive praise from that, so we hope to do that moving forward as well. We're working on PBIS. Our elementary PBIS team just finished its certification for years one and two. That was a few weeks ago. And so, now, we're in the stage where we just monitor our progress and hope to improve upon the good things that we're doing. You probably noticed on the district website that our fifth graders created arcade games in their science class with Mr. Wolf, and they incorporated our PBIS barkouts. And so, kids who earned a barkout could come down and trade their barkouts in first and second grade for little tickets, and they had four punches for each ticket, and then they could play four games. So, the... So the actual reward was really intrinsic for all the people involved, all the kiddos in fifth grade and the younger ones too that got to be excited about their barkout tickets. It was fantastic. We are looking ahead to finishing the 2019-2020 school year. The music showcase is coming up on March 23rd. Um, that's with our fourth and fifth graders at the elementary gymnasium. Um, we're working together with ECFE to provide a family night. We've got Eric Skansen coming in to talk to our families about screen time. That is on March 31st at 5:30 this time in the cafeteria at the elementary school. Um, we're working with NHS to provide some childcare as well for our families because we don't want there to be any barriers to this opportunity. Kindergarten roundup is scheduled for April 23rd and 24th. Right now our numbers are looking really strong, so go Bulldogs, that's fantastic. Um, we're working on spring assessments. We're scheduling the FastBridge reading and math assessments as well as our MCAs. We have a FastBridge PD tomorrow morning that'll be about math. So we've got AMATH and EMATH and Math Automaticity that will be teaching some of our teachers how to use those programs. Um, and, uh, we will look for the parent requests for classroom forms to come out in early April. Those are the ones where families get to select their teacher and they have to give reasons why and all of that. That'll be my first time doing something like this, so I'm A, really excited and B, really glad that David's still here. That would be fantastic. Uh, we do have our color run scheduled for Friday, May 29th at 2 o'clock. So our playground committee has been meeting to plan that. It'll look a little different this year, we're going to try to spice things up a bit and rotate the kids through stations, uh, and it'll be, it'll be worth your wait to just hang on until next month and we have more things planned to share the final things. Um, we do have some plans in place for 2020 and 2021. Our leadership teams, our building level teams, grade level teams are all having conversations about what that can look like, how we can use our skills the best possible way to reach all of our learners. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about schedules when that comes up on the agenda. Do you have any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Barry.
Well, hi, thanks for being here tonight. Um, we're talking a little bit about schedules. Um, I've tasked our leadership team with talking about the schedules. Uh, we're, we're doing some revamping of them. I'd like to provide an hour of steam time to all of our kiddos K through fifth grade. That's a half an hour addition to each of them. Um, the reason being that we really want to get those kids prepared for life after Painesville area schools, you know, we got to get them ready for what the middle school will look like and, and this should be a fantastic opportunity.
Do you mean an hour a day?
I'm sorry, an hour a week.
An hour a week?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying, because right now they have half hour a week, so. We're looking to increase that time, so that should be really good. We've had some wonderful conversations amongst our staff about, um, how to schedule to best meet student and staff needs. So again, we're right in the, in the early stages of our schedule for next year. Um, and we're looking at all kinds of opportunities for next year, seeing how we can do what's best for kids with the time and space that we have. It's all good. Any questions about us and schedules? Okay, David?
So I just want to talk a little bit about, um, some things that we got going on at the high school and looking at our daily schedule. Uh, first of all, I wanted to see if there were any questions about the, um, credit requirements? I think you have, uh, link to that.
Yeah, can we just talk a little bit briefly about that? So it's a little confusing, I want to try and, and clear it up. So the, the old, um, the current high school credits required for graduation, that is based on a quarter system. So when you look at ninth grade, they were expected to earn 24 credits. If you divide that by four, because there's four quarters, six is what you end up getting. That is really the credits that they were earning, six full year credits. So when you compare that to, the old system essentially had four years of high school credit earning times six credits per year, 24 credits equal the diploma. So if you fast forward that to the proposed, we are doing away with the quarter system. It's simply going to be a semester system. And, um, if you look at the proposed of 26 credits, what we're actually doing here is increasing the, the, um, credit requirement by two credits is, is what we're looking at. Um, those two credits, David can say this better than I, but they, I believe they were just in the elective area is where they're at. So when you look at those core areas, we're not adding anything to them. It's simply, um, the two credits are falling into the elective area. But I know that when you look at those two sheets, it was a little, um, difficult to, to look at those because one's in a quarter system and, and one is, is just a semester system.
And so we are gradually, um, converting into the, into the current system and, um, also just keeping in mind as we move on with the next grade or two that there might be some things that we need to tweak that we don't want to hold, um, we want to hold our students harmless on some of those credit changes. So we won't, you know, make it more difficult for a student to get the credits required, but we will, we'll make adjustments as we get, as we continue with that process.
So would it, why are we doing that?
Why are we doing that?
Yeah.
Uh, it just makes it better with the block system. And so we, at the high school, we don't currently have any, uh, quarter classes. All the classes are either a semester or a full year.
Gotcha.
Any questions with that?
I think you're doing pretty good. It was always a question when we switched the block system, how the credit mesh was going to work because you have to deal with four years, uh, as that went, so.
And more classes.
Great.
Is there a way to do quarter credits on this?
Well, the other conflict is, I mean...
There's not enough class?
No, so, so we don't have quarter credits, quarter classes anymore in the high school. And here's the part that I struggle with the most. In the old system, we didn't have quarter classes either. So theoretically, the way this can work for a kid is something can happen quarter one and I don't do well and I end up with an F. I do well quarter two and I end up with a passing grade. I pass my final exam. Do I earn the credit for that class? The answer to that is no, I don't. I still have to go and figure out how am I going to make up a quarter of whatever that class was. Now, there's multiple complex problems with this. Number one would be if a kid does well on the final exam and knows the content, why are we going and telling them they have to go make up a, a credit for it? It seems like we just have a rule in place to have a rule in place. Um, there are lots of classes at the high school that they were semester classes and their grades just ran cumulatively throughout the semester. And so again, it just begs the question, if you don't do well in one of those two quarters, uh, it, it's hard questions to answer. Um, now there are also classes where you would have quarter one is standalone and you have X percentage that you earned quarter one, you had X percentage quarter two, you add those together and that's what the semester grade was. Um, the bottom line is if we're not going to have quarter credits required for our high school students, then let's not have a credit system that is based on quarter credits. Because it just creates all these...
Well, there's a couple of classes here that say one, wouldn't those be quarter credits? Whatever these are.
That's one quarter. Yeah, this is, right, but right, currently, like for instance, this...
Wellness.
Is, is not happening. What, the transition to the block schedule in the, this is the old system prior to this year. This isn't necessarily what their, their current with the block schedule, what they're current offering is.
So with the block system, if it's a semester class, it's worth a half a credit?
Right, so you don't have any order credit...
We don't have any point two five, nope.
Classes that are, like if you had here, if you had, say, microeconomics and macroeconomics, you could combine those for half, but you wouldn't just take one?
No, you would take macroeconomics, but you'd take it for a semester, so it's half a credit. If we wanted to offer microeconomics as well, that would be another economics course?
Or you combine them into one, of course, micro, macro for half.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think that, that, that gets into a whole different conversation, but the question then would be, can we work with our college to get our macro content crushed into a quarter if you're essentially going to want to do micro and macro into a semester class? And macroeconomics is a bad example because that's actually a college credit class and the college basically comes in and pretty much scripts to us and says, this is what you have to do. And, and either we can say, yes, we're willing to do that, or no, we aren't. And then the college says, okay, well, we, we aren't going to be a partner with them and we don't want to be involved in it. But if you would take, for instance, um, if you would take, uh, American government and, um, economics, just the, the high school level economics. If you would want to combine those into a semester class, what you would be doing is taking the two semester classes currently and having then each of those condensed down into a quarter piece. And I'm not sure what would be accomplished in that.
To be honest. Does this impact any kids going to like the area learning center? Is it different than moving these credits or is it fluid regardless, it doesn't?
Yeah, I mean, the biggest difference is in the old system, we were on a seven period day. Most kids took six classes plus a study hall. That's why you're coming up with these 24 quarter credits, because that's what six classes was worth. Now, most kids are taking eight classes without a study hall. So it only makes sense to bump those elective, uh, credits up.
And the ALC has to, they actually have their own graduation requirements now. And so they're working, they work with each school district in the, in the co-op to, um, give the students an opportunity to continue, if they meet those requirements, to come in and get a Painesville diploma.
I think eventually where this probably needs to land is that those, the credits required for graduation eventually probably needs to be 28. I think this is a, a step in that direction. And it's really, as Mr. Orla was talking about is, the intent here is to make sure that all kids are held harmless in this. The last thing we want to do is change graduation requirements or credit requirements. And now all of a sudden you have students or half of a, a class where they feel like they're caught because of this change. And so that's kind of where this transition or these step transition is, is really coming from. But I, my personal opinion is where we should be at would be 28 credits required for graduation. We can get there, it's just going to take us a couple of steps. Question, any questions?
I have a question, but it has to do with the block system, so I'm not sure. No, it's a good time. Are we considering doing any split hours at all for next year?
Um, I'll hit on a little bit of that when I, I'll go through this process a little bit.
Okay.
Um, okay, so when the resource officers were here and, and Matt, um, referenced the emphasis on social emotional learning, we have a, a group of, uh, eight teachers who have spent the last few months, uh, Mr. Wokey is on that committee. We spent the last few months, uh, looking over our block system and researching different, um, schedules from other schools and ideas and ways that we could incorporate some social and emotional learning into our curriculum to create the, um, the connection that we want. And I just have the definition of, do you have the definition of deep learning? Yeah, I thought it was up there, I'm trying to get it. Okay. So, uh, the other thing is we put advisories on hold for a year so that we could, um, take a step back and, and work on how we're going to work within the block system. And so, um, what we're looking at, is it up there yet?
That's a beautiful picture, so.
Keep rambling, keep rambling.
I have on mic, but I just don't...
Not sure why it's doing this to me.
These are vacation pictures?
I wish. Okay, I might see the problem. That looks white, that's white.
And it might be too.
Yes, deep sea diving. I want to see my surfboard.
These?
I think I can...
So how's it look without using the screen?
So I'll, yeah, I'll get started, I know that we're on a, a time crunch here. So what we wanted to do is, uh, look for ways to incorporate some social emotional learning to just create that, um, atmosphere where kids can feel connected to school. And in that, we looked at, uh, deep learning, which is, is really, um, creating the, um, the opportunity for students to, you know, dig deeper into, uh, subjects, interests, and just spark something in those students. And so we wanted to, we wanted to kind of do all of those things and then incorporate the advisory time. And so what we're, what we're looking at is, um, creating a, a time each day where students will, um, will have the opportunity to choose their personalized learning. And so, um, we're going to, we're looking at incorporating it, it's something that we're going to call connect time. And so what that is, it's daily personalized learning, which, um, hits on three areas. Student support, uh, extend and enrich. And so we want to be able to hit the three levels of where our students may be on a particular day. Um, if you remember at the elementary, we did those explore classes and kids were able to choose what they wanted to do for that six week process. Essentially, we're doing that process and it's going to be, but it's going to be, uh, around 30 minutes every single day. So every single teacher, uh, in this building at a certain point during the day will have, um, 30 minutes with a group of students who are interested and who have signed up for something that they are offering that day. And so it's support, it can look like, you know, additional instruction, um, students who need to work on missing assignments or, or just, um, some what I need time. And then extend would be, um, teachers offering things to take what they're, um, teaching in class and taking it to the next level for those students who are interested in that. And then enriching would just be challenging and some higher level thinking for our students. And so, um, so every, every morning, the students at a certain time, there's a, a scheduling program that is designed specifically for personalized learning. So every morning at, say, 8 o'clock, we open up, we open that up. Students go online and they have a whole list of things that are being offered by the teachers. And that student clicks on what, what they're interested in that day or what they might need that day. And then they are locked into that, then in that 30 minute block. The teachers have the ability to go on this program and to, um, up to a month in advance and they can create their syllabus or what they're going to be working on, on those particular days. So they may have, there might be a, a teacher who wants to do a project totally outside of their, their teaching realm. But it's something that they have passion for and they may want to pass on to another student or other students. So they can go in and they create a document and they just give a brief description of what they're offering. And then you can, you can define what grade levels it's going to be and then you can put a max number of students that, that are available, that they could have for that class. Students go on and pick that class and then that's where they are. Um, along with providing that opportunity where students can kind of choose what they need and where they need to be, then there's also the opportunity to use that 30 minutes, um, for, let's say the NHS wants to have a meeting once a month on a Thursday. So whoever is the NHS advisor would go into the scheduler and they would put in that there's an NHS meeting, you know, during connect time. And then the NHS students go in and they register for that and they do their 30 minute meeting right during the day. So we're not taking kids out of the classroom, we're not, it's not before or after school, but they have an opportunity to meet. Um, the other, other things that we can do and really the possibilities are endless, um, with our MT- our MTSS programming, it gives those teachers an opportunity to work with students during that time without pulling them out of the regular classroom and instruction. There's an opportunity for some PLC time. We, we talked about having our SRO, SRO officers come in. This is a great opportunity if they wanna create, if they wanna teach a class one day, then they could just go under, work with a classroom teacher and then they could plug in that they're gonna, you know, their connect time that day is gonna be on something to do with that. And students that wanna come in and, and learn about that can sign up for it that morning. We, we plan on having community experts who wanna come in and, and, you know, spend 30 minutes going over something in their area of expertise. It could be kind of like our lunch and learn right now where we, where we have businesses come in and talk about what they do and some opportunities. It can be used as a quiet study hall. I mean, just so many things that we can do. And with this program, if there are students that need, that are just way behind on assignments or, or it's just been an issue trying to get that student caught up, then the teacher can go in and do something where the student has to go to that area. But the whole point isn't that we use this system to catch the students that are behind or not doing their assignments or things like that. The whole point of the system is to create opportunities for our students to find a connection to school outside of the block system. And then there are opportunities to bring those kids in that need that extra help and maybe don't wanna come in on their own and do it. But really, we just wanna be able to create an opportunity for. So then we talked about advisory time and we had, we had eliminated that this year where we put a hold on it. So what we're gonna do is within that, within that connect time, two times a month, then students would go to their advisor. And so maybe like every other, every other Wednesday would be advisory time during the connect time, so students wouldn't be registering for anything, they would just go to their advisor at that time. And then during that advisory time, I think the biggest issue with advisory time is that it was kind of, they weren't doing anything. You know, it was a 10, 12 minute, sit there and do nothing. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna incorporate the social and emotional learning into the advisory time. And so we'll have a, we're gonna develop a curriculum over the summer so that every single teacher during advisory time is working on some component of social emotional learning. And we're looking at habits of mind, which is a, it's a, it's 16 different areas of social emotional growth that students, that habits that any student or adult can acquire and work on. So those advisory times are gonna be scripted, but then there'll also be time for looking at registration or class schedules or that teacher to check in with, with those students. But really, the advisor is gonna know that group of students better than they know anybody else in this school. So the plan is that if you're a sixth grader, you would have the same advisor through eighth grade and then ninth grade, you would have the same advisor through, through 12th grade. But we feel like incorporating it twice a month and having a set curriculum and a set, set of goals for that advisory time will really make it worthwhile. So we're in the process of just looking at how we wanna do our schedule. I think the consensus is that we have a lot of, there's a lot of time between classes and how can we cut that down? And how can we cut down some of the, the, just the extra time that is in our current schedule and streamline things and get it so that we can get to 30? Right now, we have it figured between 30 and 37 minutes a day of this personalized learning time into it. So we're, we're continuing to look at that. Where Mary and I are talking all the time about ideas, but our committee of teachers will have something hopefully here in the next couple of weeks so that we can, we can bring to the board to, to share with you and, and move forward. It's just a continuation of, of tweaking what we're doing. I think, I think the block system is great. I like the A, B days. Now, how can we make it better? And how can we make it better for our students and give them an opportunity to, to flourish a little bit in our, in our building?
Oh, question. Will students, so with the options that they can pick, is there gonna be, you want them to have so many different types of classes or do they have to choose a class or put a student pick study hall every time?
So with this program, you can kinda monitor all that and we would be able to, it, it's just like we don't want this, a teacher having a study hall every day.
Right.
So we're, we're gonna mix things up. And I had a, so we talked about this at a staff meeting at the in-service class Friday. And so we've already started a, a document with our staff where they are, we're just plugging in ideas and then they're marking whether, what area it's in, whether it's the support extend. And then we're, that'll be kind of a jumping off point. But we can monitor, we can monitor that. We want kids to, to do things. I mean, it, it could be as simple as they can, you know, one of the fire teachers is having badminton for a half hour and he'll take 30 kids in there and they'll all wanna be in there, but it's not something that he's gonna offer every day. It's gonna be, you know, a wide variety of things. The key is just to not to get into a rut with what they're choosing and what we're offering. And so there'll be a little bit of a oversight on that and how that works, yeah.
Did you get your question? You had a question?
No, I've got, I've got questions. It sounds fascinating, but I got a lot of questions, but we got like 120 seconds left.
Go ahead, ask a question.
Well, I just kind of, on piggybacking on that, wanted to make sure kids are having to engage because a lot of kids would choose just to not do anything, like if I'm gonna...
They have, they have to go somewhere.
So does that show, like you would know if?
Yep.
Like, it seems like a really overwhelming thing to try and figure out if kids are where they're supposed to be doing.
The computer program is specifically designed for personalized learning. And so when you sign up for a class, then that teacher has a roster of who signed up, but the student doesn't know who signed up. So they're not, unless they're sitting next to a friend or something and they're saying, let's do this. So they're, that hope is that they'll find, you know, do it based on interest. But it, it's gonna be certainly a lot of growing pains and, and students aren't used to picking what they wanna do. And so our hope is that we do this and then we continue to grow it into where they can, where they can do this more and they can do it based on, you know, a, a subject that they have, that they wanna go to that class on that day. So there's a lot of things that we can do to really continue to grow that, but I think this is a really good first start.
No, I have a question too.
We have a minute left. If everybody's agreeable, we're gonna push out the one to the next meeting. That's about us. Just about students, I think we have to prioritize and then we're done at six. What's that?
Yep, don't worry about us.
And then we're done at six o'clock, so go ahead. Actually, if you have more questions.
No, I was gonna ask about continuity for classes like math, foreign languages and music. And just talking to some of the teachers, most of the other teachers I've talked to enjoy the A, B block and the extra time, but these that need that like daily consistency that are going sometimes from Thursday till next Wednesday, they're just having to reteach, you know? So just the, the idea of splitting some of the hours, split hours, that they could have that daily for some of those. That just adds another layer of difficulty to scheduling, but.
The idea is just, is so that we're, we'll do a better job of not overloading an A day with, you know, math, science and English where we can break it up a little bit. I think that, that helps.
So we're all done? You'll be back on this topic sometime?
Yep.
Okay, well, it's only having time for questions. Thanks, everybody.